Perfect. Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. I'm going to share my screen here. Oh, it says host disabled attendee screen sharing, or do you have my, you have my slide set?
You should be good to share now.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Let me pull this up here. Okay. Let me know if there's any problems seeing it. It should go into full screen mode here. Okay. Looks good.
Looks great.
Perfect. Okay. Well, good evening again. I'm happy to be here. I'm Solwiss Suleman. I'm a pediatric infectious disease doctor, as you probably heard. I'm going to get right into the data for this update. So just as, this is just a little outline here about COVID-19 cases in the world and nationally, and then regionally in the state of Pennsylvania, and then also locally for you guys in Chester and Delaware County. Looking also at some future predictions and modeling for COVID-19, and then the latest reopening guidance from the state of Pennsylvania, and from the CHOP Policy Lab, and then some final conclusions that I'll be able to give you. So worldwide and nationally, you can see here on the left-hand side, it sort of lists global cases, US cases, pediatric cases, which is certainly of importance to us. And then I have two columns that show you sort of week to week. And so I've been trying to trend those over time. And so you can see the first column is from the week of September 5th. The last column ended the week of the 13th, yesterday. And so the global cases are increasing, but the good news is that the increase is lower than it has been in the past. The same for the US. They're down anywhere between 15 and 20% nationally and worldwide. Pediatric pediatric cases, though, do continue to rise. And I, I show you here the numbers, about 513,000 children have been infected with COVID-19. This is cumulative numbers. About almost 10% of them, almost 10% of the whole US population that's been infected with COVID-19 represents children. That number used to sit in the 2% to 3% range, rose to between 5% and 6%, and has now risen over the last really four weeks, up to 10%. Part of that is due to symptomatic cases. The majority of that is due to testing and more, more sites testing children, whether symptomatic or asymptomatic. Unfortunately, we don't have the data to tell us whether it's symptomatic or asymptomatic. Just below that number, you'll see in Pennsylvania and Delaware, that the percentage of residents in the state that are children. And so that's also an important number to trend. The American Academy of Pediatrics puts out this data every week. And so you can see that in Pennsylvania, it's been sitting around 8%, so lower than the, some of the main and average numbers across the US. And then Delaware is about 7.7%. So they're very, very similar, but those numbers have risen slowly over time, which is important to note. Global deaths and US deaths continue to rise, but overall lower. You'll see here on the next slide, on the left-hand side is new cases per day. New cases per day is really a reflection of testing, but it's also a reflection of patients are symptomatic. And the new cases thankfully have gone down, and you can see that trend over time. And then on the top, it says 14-day change in cases. So we're down about 20% from what the trajectory had been. So that is good news nationally and globally. This is a list of US hotspots. This is from the New York Times. They do a great job of tracking some of the COVID-19 data. And these are the places where the ratio of cases per persons in that area has been increasing. The important thing to note here is that there are not any locations, the closest to here is Blacksburg, Virginia. But there are not any locations that are near us, which is good news in general. And so we look at this every week. I look at it often, sometimes daily. But the good news here is that we are not in a current hotspot. However, these are where cases are lower, but they are going up. And unfortunately, Delaware, Pennsylvania, New Jersey are all on this list. Some of them because of small super spreader outbreaks, and some of them just because the amount of cases is slowly going up. We have to watch really, really closely. But I think it's important to note that we're on a little bit of a watch list. This is a beautiful picture. Red is bad, green is good, of the seven-day average of testing positivity rates. So test rates of positivity in the last seven days. So how many, who's testing positive right now? All the red is bad, green is good. You can see that the northeast is in a much better position than the south and even extending up into the Midwest. And that's been the trend for a while now. And we'll get more granular into some of the data specific to our local area. One thing to note here, and I followed up the US picture with the college and university updates. This is going to be very important moving forward because there are going to be small outbreaks. And there already are at colleges and universities. And there is, we can get some information and data from colleges in the state of Pennsylvania, and certainly ones that are local to our area. And you can see here that Temple had, has had the most confirmed cases thus far, prompting them to have to go to online learning. Penn State is in a hybrid model, and they have had about 73 confirmed cases. University of Pennsylvania has had 68, and that, obviously, these numbers change. So they'll get updated frequently, which is about, is less than 1% of their population that's back on campus. University of Pennsylvania, and, and a lot of these universities have intrinsically some people that have to be there. And so there have definitely been small little outbreaks. You can see some in Villanova, some at Westchester, and none thus far for Drexel, Haverford, or Bryn Mawr. And then Pennsylvania updates. So this is from the Pennsylvania dashboard. These are cumulative cases. So when you look at this map, the darker the red, the, the more number of cases there are. This is cumulative over time. I think any of us could predict that. But if you look on the top right, and the top right here shows the number of new cases per day, you can see there was this large increase that we saw in April. We, we came down nicely in June. We had a little bit of an increase in July, and we're just sort of waiting to see what happens. But it has leveled off a little bit here, which is really important to note. Sorry about that. All right. This next slide also shows a very similar, similar trend. This is, this is the number of cases. This is in Pennsylvania. You had a huge increase April and May. You came down nicely in June. We had a small increase in July. A lot of this because we opened up some social distancing, and we had this slight increase here early part of September. So again, important to note for the state of Pennsylvania. One of the last things we'll talk about here is the age ranges. So this is a nice breakdown, which we don't get in a lot of locations, and we don't get data that's broken down by age. But you can see here that the number of cases in Pennsylvania, the majority of them are, are not pediatric patients. And so this sort of light brown tape value here is 20 to 29-year-olds. This number has risen dramatically. These two numbers make up the bulk. This is 20 to 40-year-olds. And you can see 0 to 9, very few cases, and this is 10 to 19. We have to watch this group right here very closely. But this is, these are the spreaders right in, in the moment. And if you look at local data to the county even, down to Chester and Delaware County, this is a very similar trend where you see this information, where you have much smaller numbers in this pediatric age group, less than 19, and you have really big numbers up here. This is the seven-day positivity rate over the state of Pennsylvania. Again, this looks at total positive tests over the last seven days. And certainly, red is bad. Red is 9 to 15%. Orange is 5 to 9%, and yellow is 3 to 5%. Obviously, green is good. If you could sit in the green all the time, that would be amazing. That's not, that's not really going to be, we haven't been there. I don't, I don't think since it started. But you can see here, Philadelphia County is in yellow. You can see here Chester and Delaware County are in yellow and orange. Lancaster County had previously been in red, now is in orange. And so we're sort of in this middle ground where we're doing okay, but we really have to watch it. And then when you get into this granular data about Chester and Delaware County, this, I want to orient you to this table here. So on the left-hand side, these are the metrics that we've been looking at, and I would, would sort of say that the two most important metrics are incidence per 100,000. So that's the number of cases of COVID-19 per 100,000 I always say patients, persons in the population. And then PCR percent positivity, how many tests, nasal swabs or pharyngeal swabs were positive in that county in a period of time. So on the next slide here, these are the two main things, incidence per 100,000. And each, we sort of start on the 7th. This is the week that starts the 7th of August, all the way up to the week that started the 4th of September, and ended with the data we just received on Friday. So this is the most up-to-date data. And unfortunately, you can see here Chester County had been at 37 per 100,000, which is okay, was doing better, and then started to see an increase, and then had a huge jump last week here. Delaware County had, had been more of a situation where they had some super-spreeder events and had come down nicely and has sort of stabilized. Although we would like this number to be lower, it has stabilized. But Chester County had a huge increase. The same goes for percent positivity. This is how many positive tests have happened in the county, and it's, and it's based on a percentage. Ideally, you're less than 3%. Ideally, you're zero, but ideally, you're less than 3%. And you can see here in Chester County, we had been about 3.5%, gone down to 2.5% beautifully, and then a slow increase, and then a slow increase. And we were waiting this week to see what happened, and it took a big jump to 6.5%. This, I, I think is mostly attributed to a super-spreeder event in a Downingtown-based school, where there was a cheerleading team that became infected and then infected potentially up to 60 other people or more. However, there, and there could be more of these smaller super-spreeder events that then goes more widespread throughout the community. So this was an unfortunate big jump that, that Chester County took last week. Delaware County has sort of settled in the 4 range and come down, had slowly increased. But clearly, this number here was very concerning. One good thing I will say is that the hospitalization rates and patients coming to the ER for COVID-like illnesses have been better and have, and have really not had an increase over time. All of these numbers have actually looked very good and have been getting better despite the percent positivity increasing. I think that, I would infer that the people are testing positive, but they're not becoming as sick, at least in this moment. One other slide I wanted to share with you here was, I, we were also able to look at the school district data. So this is the population, this is by school district. And so this, this data has much fewer people in it than the community that's surrounding. And you can see here, the school district that obviously you're in, has had very low numbers. But these numbers, the reason why this is not the best data, even though it's important to look at, is that there hasn't been a huge, I mean, there have been some increases here, but you're talking about seven and eight people. You're not talking about huge numbers. And really, you want to look at the community spread because the community spread is very much what's reflective of what's going on and what your staff and students are seeing. This is the slide talking about modeling. And this is from the CHOP Policy Lab. They have an amazing site where they do some amazing work that is able to help model what the, what the actual projected numbers of cases will be over the next four weeks in our area, based on social distancing, based on temperature. And so you can see the top left here is Chester County. So I want to orient you a little bit too, because this is the case number over here. And down here on the x-axis, you have the, the timeframe. Now, you'll notice that for Delaware County, just below that, the case numbers are different. So the hashtags are different here. So the, they're all, you have to really be noticeable. It's all about the trend, really, but the cases in general are lower in Chester County than they are, for example, in Philadelphia County, but it might appear differently because of the way that the graph is. So don't be fooled by that part, but pay most attention to this trend here and the trend of where they think the cases are going. So in Chester County, their prediction for the next four weeks, and they have, they have predicted these models very nicely in the past and predicted these little increases, is that the case rate will increase substantially over the next four weeks, which is a little bit different than Philadelphia County, which, which is essentially going to stay stable. And down here on Delaware County, which again, will, they predict will, will be relatively stable. So the other counties, if you look around, Newcastle County and Delaware also has an increase that's very similar to Chester County. But Montgomery County, Berks County, Lancaster County, all looks like they are stable numbers. This is just reiterating the Chester County guidance that to transition to a more in-person instructional model really wants sustained rates for three consecutive weeks and decreasing number of cases to go to a more virtual model. It wants sustained rates for two weeks. So really, what they're telling you here is they want to, to increase your risk to go to more in-person instruction. They want sustained rates for a longer period of time, which, which makes sense. This is the guidance that they've put out. This is also a very important table. And it really shows you the two metrics that we discussed, which was incidence rate for 100,000, and, which is right here, and then PCR test positivity rate right here. So to be low and to be fully in-person, you have to have an incidence rate less than 10 for 100,000 and less than 5% test rates positive, which not many of the counties in this area have been in, in a very long time, because it's not an or, it's an and. And then for moderate, it's less than 10 to less than 40 and 5 to 7%. So where unfortunately, if you look at Chester County as the majority of the amount of the, the staff and students and faculty that come to your school district, you're going to fall here in this 70, 71. So you would fall here. And you would have less, that you'd have 6.5%, but it, it really is going to put you in this category here, virtual and/or hybrid. The other thing, if you just purely look at that based on the numbers. But another thing that's important, which the CHOP Policy Lab really talks about, is looking at stability and stability in cases and stability in testing over time. And that's the hard part about this data, is that there has not been stability. Unfortunately, there's been an increase. So really, to, to move from fully, from online to an in-class or hybrid instruction, they would recommend stable or declining weekly case rates and, and much lower. And so I think it's important to note here that the stability, particularly for Chester County, has not been good over, over the last four weeks, and certainly not last week. So these are some conclusions that I, that I certainly can draw from this data. So pediatric cases are the highest they've been nationally, and they certainly have been higher over the last three weeks. Part of that is due to increase in testing. Part of that is due to symptomatic cases. We don't have a great, a great amount of data on pediatric cases at a county level. So it's hard for me to say in your area exactly what that is, but I would say they're probably lower than national averages, but still present. Hospitalization rates are still really low. They're in the 1% to 2% range. They're about 1% in Delaware and Pennsylvania, which is really good. But it doesn't mean that children don't get infected at all, but their hospitalization rates are much better than adults. Delaware, Pennsylvania, and New Jersey have very low but slowly increasing rates, so we have to be really careful and pay attention to that over the next, you know, every week. Chester County, unfortunately, their new cases, their incidence per 100,000, and their percent positivity took a significant increase over the last week. And so I think that is a discouraging number for sure. And then Delaware County cases have really been about the same. The modeling studies do show an increase in cases over the next four weeks, particularly in Chester County. And I would say that if cases continue to increase or stay at this high rate over the next two weeks, that virtual instruction will have to stay because the increase is just too dramatic and too large over time. Really, you need to see stability over at least a two to four-week time period, which we have, you know, we can't really see right at this moment. So I think I will open it up to questions. That was my last slide. And I'm sure there will be some, and I'm happy to go back to any slide that anyone would like me to revisit.
Dr. Suleman, can you talk a little about the modeling a little bit more about why, what goes into those predictions?
Sure. Here, I'll go back to that slide here. So the CHOP Policy Lab modeling is, is based on social distancing that's happening in the community. It's, it's based on a, it's a scientific and a mathematical model. So it looks at social distancing. It looks at trends in cases over the last, easily over the, the previous four weeks, and the, the change in cases. And so it's, and it also goes based on temperature. So it's interesting that we, you know, this is a respiratory virus that typically hate, should hate warm weather, but has loved warm weather. And so the temperature changes aren't, aren't as important, but really, this is looking at social distancing in that community and, and the rate of social distancing that they've been able to, some of this information they're getting from the health department, and also looking at, at the change in cases over time. So it's not an exact science, but they are able to, they have predicted things really well. And this is the most data that we can get in a county level, the most we can see as a county, as opposed to, there are some other models that can predict things over periods of time, but not on a county level like we're able to see here.
Can you speak again to how accurate that model has been in the past?
It has been, it, it has actually been quite accurate. I don't, I don't have a percentage, but if you were to take the county and superimpose, I, I was able to look back and you can take the county and superimpose what it had looked like as far as the trend in cases over time. It's very similar. It's very, very similar. So, and I would say that they have been working on this model since COVID started, and they have used a similar model to this for other disease processes, not, not just COVID-19, but they had tried to apply it to that and have really been using it since, I mean, they've got data here since May, but I think they've, you know, they've been trying to use it since then, and it's been pretty, pretty accurate. And this is what the, this is why, I believe, why Chester County, what they stated on their website, why they chose to wait. And not, not this particular like model with the trend, but they chose to wait to have, you know, school districts consider even in-person learning based on this modeling strategy. They said, no, no, no in-person instruction until October 9th, or until October 12th, technically. And this is one of the main reasons why Chester County decided to do that, was based on some of this modeling. Because they thought they would see an increase after Labor Day.
Dr. Suleman, could you go back to the slide that has the grid of numbers with the testing positivity rates?
Sure. This one right here?
Yeah. So when, when someone looks at this, you, a non-doctor, non-medical person like myself, you could look at it as actually, with the exception of 9-4, relatively stable. And so I wonder, is there anything that, I think you mentioned the Downingtown School Super-Spreeder Event. Was that in the 9-4 data?
That is in the 9-4 data. That's correct.
But you can't really discount that because it happened, and now it's in the community, correct?
Correct. Yes. So I have a feeling you're probably trying to say what, or maybe I'm, what is enough of a change that show concern? Is that? I totally see your point.
Yeah. It's like if you go to the next week and it's back to 3.5%, what do you, what do you make of that?
Yeah, very good question. I mean, very, it's a very good point, and it's a very valid point, because I, I even had mentioned yesterday when we were chatting as a smaller group, that, you know, if the rate was 3.8%, you know, I would probably think to myself, you know, that's, that's a pretty stable rate, even though you've gone from 2.5% to 3.8% over a period of time. So a doubling over four weeks is likely too much of a change. So if you had gone from 2.5% on 8-14 to 5% here, that would be probably be too much. But if you were sitting at 3% or 4% here, that would just be a slow creep over time and would probably be okay. But unfortunately, these small super-spreeder events, once they get out there, they're out in the community, and as fast as the contact tracers are, if there's enough super-spreeder events, the community spread can get to be too much. So I think that you can't, you, you don't want to discount it, but you certainly want to have to see what the next week's data look like. Hopefully, it's lower. But you can't, you can't unfortunately discount it.
Thank you.
Sure.
I have I have two questions. First, I want to say I appreciate your presentation. It's fantastic and very informative, so I appreciate that. One question is, speak to your, and I know a lot of this still after six-plus months is unknowable. I mean, I'm aware of that, so I'm not asking you to tell me a fact. What, could you speak to the lag time, taking the example of the Downingtown Super-Spreeder Cheerleaders? What is sort of, how do you think about the lag time between that event and when it would actually show up in the more expanded community? If you could speak to that, and then I have one other quick question.
Sure. So the, the way that the trends we have seen time and time again have been, you have a super-spreeder event, you typically, you typically see the cases expand over two weeks of time, because that incubation period is 14 days. And so you say, you'll, you'll see probably the outcome of the first wave of the super-spreeder events over the next two weeks. And then you'll see two weeks after that, so four weeks after the initial event, you'll see likely the hospitalizations associated with that. And then potentially three to four weeks later, after that, you'll see the deaths associated with that. So the, probably the biggest effects that you're going to see from one super-spreeder event are going to be within two weeks and then four weeks. This data is, is right around, is right, I think this is the second week from that event, because they did, the event happened earlier than this, as I understand it. And they were able to count those numbers into this data. So that's the only data I know for sure is, is in there. But there, the second wave is not in here. So if there's a second wave of spread from the people, the 60 people that were potentially infected, it will show up, I, I would anticipate, within the next two weeks. Does that help you give a?
It does. I know there's a lag, and I was just trying to understand what your perspective on that is. And, and the second is kind of related, not related with the college students. We saw 10, a couple others. And what it, could you speak to maybe what your interpretation is of if those kids are going online and then they, I think, I think other people have this question too, that's why I'm asking it. Then they come home. Is that factored into the trending that CHOP has predicted?
So, you know, I don't know if it factors into the CHOP model. That's a good question, because I don't know if it factors into that. I, but I could communicate with someone about that. I think that we certainly have to factor that in, because either they're coming home, and, and when I was speaking with the leadership of the school, I, you know, I'm, I don't know this area quite as well, but it sounds like there are a lot of families that have children that go to Penn State, and then if they come home, or any of the colleges and universities that are local. And so that could, could be disastrous if, if people, if kiddos come home and we're not able to quarantine them at home. I think right now I worry most about the colleges and universities that are in the area that we are in. And even if they're quarantining, likely if they're quarantining, they've already, the events have already happened. It's just more of what's happening locally. Now, if they come home, ideally, they stay at home and they quarantine at home, but then they could potentially obviously infect the other members of the household. I don't think that's put into the model, but I can certainly ask. So sorry, I don't know that question exactly.
Dr. Suleman, if we look at Chester County, it's so different. We've got urban areas like Phoenixville, we've got Westchester, Coatesville, that are more urban than we are, of course. We've also got areas out at Oxford, Actonera that are more rural than we are. If you look at Delaware County, even more variety. You've got your Upper Darby's, you've got your Chester, you've got your Radnor Township. Just one Delaware County township is in our district, which is Chad's Ford Township. But what does seem to me to be very important is our district. You know, our eight townships. This is where we all live. This is where all of our children live. This is where a lot of us work, and with the pandemic, this is where tremendous amount of the parents are working from home. So it seems to me that our school district numbers are very important, maybe should be the most important number to drive our decisions. Why do you think it's more important to use a Chester County or a blended Delaware County or something like that? In terms of all those differences?
Yeah, that's, that's a really good point. So when I was looking at this specific data that this is put out by the state, it didn't seem to me as though that the population of twenty-five thousand encompassed all of, all of that particular school district. And so maybe I can do a little more investigation into, into that. But I think it doesn't show, I guess I wasn't convinced that it was showing exactly what was happening only in that area. I mean, I can totally appreciate that a lot of families are working from home and are very confined to the specific school district, but I, I was, the way I interpreted this, and when I had been reading through this, was that not, it didn't, it wasn't fully encompassing. But it is, it is generally lower, but you can see here that I guess I just have a hard time understanding that there's only twenty-five thousand. Not a hard time understanding, but appreciating that these are the exact numbers, and even like the Health Department, that, the Health Department, I'm not sure that they felt like these numbers were completely accurate, but I can try to get some more information for you.
I think a follow-up question to that might be exactly, if we're looking at the school district data, is this where the people were tested? Or is this where they live? So that, do you have the answer to that?
I, I think that this number has to be, so like hospitalizations, for example, hospitalizations are based on what hospital reported the test, not where the patient lived. I would assume for the school district that somehow they would have to understand where that particular patient lived and if they fall into that school district. I can't imagine it's where they were tested. But that's a really good point. I can certainly look into that as well.
Because it's even difficult to find what school district addresses are associated with sometimes. So I think if we were going to rely more heavily on this, which I agree with Mr. Halron's point, that this is very important subset of information to look at, I think we would definitely need to understand it better.
There's two parts to this I can tell you is that those numbers do not include Chad's Ford. That is only the six townships of Chester County. There's also the, or seven, yeah, there's six townships in Chester County, that's all this includes, not, not Chad's Ford. And the other thing is, is if East Marlborough Township is partly Kennett Consolidated School District and part, mostly Unionville Chad's Ford, and they did some type of
They just prorated it.
Prorated, yeah. Yep, that's it. So it's, there's probably some more digging that could be done relative to that.
Yeah, if you could get Chad's Ford Township, Delaware County, that's probably roughly twenty percent. It's roughly twenty percent of our, of our population in our school district, and blend that in, and so we really know about our school district exactly. I think that would be very helpful. And also it would be helpful because that number might go from, you know, twenty-six thousand to thirty-one or thirty-two thousand.
That
A similar note, do we have the ability to split out the Chester County prison population and the two long-term health facilities within our school district as, so they're not skewing the numbers?
I'm, I'm not aware of any, I can certainly look. Unfortunately, I don't think there's any way to parse them out. It's really hard to parse out some of those numbers. I mean, I can't even get pediatric data. Barely. So that's a really good point, because that could be some of those, some of those drivers. I can ask the Health Department if they have that data, and I'll, they'll give it to me.
The biggest, biggest question we all have is this fear of COVID, obviously, is, you know, are we going to be able to open our schools? I mean, at some point, we want to be able to open our schools. And I guess we are hoping that we would learn about this data and how to look at this data, week after week, as you're going to help us educate us a little bit on this. But it's the, the more you look at state level or county level or higher level, the worse it looks. Or granular levels, so we can actually open our school at some point. So how, how we're going to get there is kind of the journey we're hoping you can help us with, but these predictive models, you know, can these predictive models be done at that granular level? I mean, I like the predictive models, but, you know, what are they using? They're using numbers, are they asking Chester County Health Department to provide the social distancing, distancing assessment? And then they're plugging that in? If it's an assessment, how can we help Chester County provide assessment of our school district? How can we get to a level where we actually make this decision? Because it just feels like it's so high level. It doesn't feel like it's helpful, you know what I mean?
I think, I appreciate, yeah, the comments. I think it's, it's hard because you're, you know, you're not all of Chester count, you know, so if you just look at Chester County as granular, you even want to get more, you know, into the details with specifically your school district, which I can appreciate. I don't know that there's going to be a way to model what the specific, I can get percentage of cases per count, per area. I can actually, that, that data is available. And we can try, I probably need some help from, I have to, just because I'm not so familiar with the geography. So we can try to, to get a percent positive rate from that. But I don't know how to make, how to get a model that's going to be able to do that just for that area, because I don't think it's, you're right, I don't think it's that that granular. It's a, it's a good, it's a good question, because I don't, I think that all, obviously not all of Chester County reflects what is happening, you know, specifically in the school district and in the patient, in the, I always say patients, in the families and staff and students that are in your school district. So I can think a little bit more about that. And I mean, I can reach out to the Policy Lab folks. I just don't know that they're going to have enough information to be able to make a model that's accurate for you.
Just on this, why should cheerleading thing in Downingtown affect Unionville Chad's Ford? I'm just, I'm just throwing a provocative statement out there, saying, you know, why should we worry about what's happening in Downing? You know, just to, just to be a provocation, but I don't want to provoke it, but I think those are sort of the, those are the kinds of things, like, wouldn't it be nice if you knew our area? Otherwise, we'll never open these schools, you know what I mean?
I actually just want to offer a slightly different perspective, which is that we live in Unionville Chad's Ford School District. I grocery shop in Garnet Valley School District. My kids, not my kids, but my neighbors play flag football in Downingtown School District. I think baseball practice is in Kennett School District. I mean, it's like, we are a community with the school districts that we are neighboring with. And Westchester Area School District is one that borders a significant amount of our students. And you can see those numbers are quite different than ours, but of course, the N is four times, the population is four times of ours too. So I just personally don't feel that it's, I like it as one data point for whatever available, but I don't know that we should consider it in isolation and spend too much time and energy going in that direction. And others may feel differently, but that's, that's my opinion.
I want to chime in. I agree with Mrs. Brown. I think we should, if we can tease out specifics, but also we need to be mindful of we are all not just living in the small confines of, with grocery shopping and sports and everything. I have one other question, Dr. Solomon. With, you know, a couple of weeks ago, schools, elementary through high schools, opening in some of the southern states and some of the other states. There was things in the media about outbreaks in the schools, but I, I wasn't successful in being able to get to information around, okay, so how did that play out? How is that playing out? And how can they tie the kids, the K through twelve kids, to a community spread? And I, my, my guess is data is just not being shared because of either privacy or politics or what, but I don't know if that's something that you can speak to or have access to. Because even though I understand that's a different climate, they're in the south, more air conditioning, more indoors, all that. I also think that would be something to just take into the mix as far as either on the pro or con. Either they're seeing that those cases and those kids didn't lead to a big outbreak in the community, or they did, or somewhere in between. So I don't know if you can speak to that or get to that information.
No, that's, I'm actually very glad that you mentioned that, because that's one of the things that I think we'll be able to, I'll hopefully be able to report out on moving forward. Some of the southern, you know, southern states, I mean, I'm actually from Arkansas originally, so some of the Arkansas students have gone back, even though arguably they haven't really, most of them haven't been back for as long as we probably need. You probably need a good four weeks of time for them to be back in school to start to understand that. There have been some reports from Florida that have said that there have been some spreading events. Some of the numbers range anywhere between twenty and thirty percent of, of an increase in cases because of school. But the reality is, is, are the increase, it's hard to parse out, is that the reason for the increase? And is that the actual percentage, the increase? And so I think if I gave you numbers right now, I think they're not, they're not really accurate. I think in two to four weeks, we'll be able to get a better sense of the slow, it's that trend over time that's really, really important. And if we do see the numbers go up for no other reason, and then the contact tracing that happens, and then they can accurately say, hey, we can trace this back to this family that then was able to, you know, this family that was then able to see that there was a spreading event. But I think it'll take probably two to four weeks to really be able to see that. I don't think we can accurately say that that has happened yet, because my hope, particularly in the Philadelphia area, where some of the private schools have gone back in, to have gone back into, that just happened within this last week. So even like, I live in Philadelphia, I can go to a friend's school, they're virtual, but some of the other friend's schools are back in action. And so I'm like crossing my fingers that they're going to do it well, and so that we can have those, that data too.
Dr. Solomon, would, as we head into closer to October, November, and the flu season comes, let's say, you know, the, the couple of metrics that they're saying, two, two, one goes sore throat and nausea or vomiting or you know, headache, and like, those are so common flu symptoms. So let's say, as we get to that place, their common flu symptoms, would people be asked to do COVID testing if they have flu? Is that what's going to happen next? Is, what's your sense, how are we going to separate flu from COVID-19?
This is the five million dollar question. I think it's going to be hard. I think this is where rapid testing is going to come into play. It's going to be really, really important, because it's, it's, it's going to be very difficult. I mean, a lot of kids are going to have the typical cold-type symptoms, and do they have COVID? Or do they have influenza? Or do they have rhinovirus? Or what do they have? It's really, really hard to know. So I think it's going to be tough, and unfortunately, this is why it's going to, the winter and the fall is going to be hard, because a lot of people are going to have to stay home and get tested just because of that situation. It's, it's tough. I mean, it's going to, as a mom and as a parent and as a doctor, it's going to be tough because they all look the same. So hopefully, rapid testing is going to be the most important thing that they, they get seen by their physician, they get a rapid test, they find out that day or the next day, and then, you know, you can move on and just treat what they have, but it's tricky.
Are we ready to move on? Let me just close, Dr. Solomon, by telling you thank you, and also that neither I nor I think any of my colleagues is really trying to pressure you into letting us open our schools to live instruction. That's not our goal. Our goal is to make good decisions based on good data. You know, and if that decision is to stay virtual, that's what we want to do, and that's what we need to do. So that's what's behind it. I don't want you to feel
Oh, it's okay. No, I understand. I mean, I'm right there with you. We want to get our kids back into school safely and have our faculty and staff be safe. Like, I am right there. I think it's, it's just the numbers this week are unfortunately discouraging. But I can, I can certainly get, try to get some more information for you on the things we discussed and report back.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
I have to say that you have upgraded the superintendent's report.
Well, I'm glad I could be helpful. I'm plugging my computer in, so I don't go down here, but I'm glad I could be helpful. And, you know, we'll, I look forward to hopefully getting some better information for you guys. Better news in the coming weeks.
Thank you.
All right, everybody. Take care. Bye-bye. I'm going to stop sharing my screen here, so you have access to freedom there. All right. Take care.